Good evening, and welcome to the January 8th, 2014 meeting of the City of Brookhaven Planning Commission. And I'm Stan Siegel, and I will be presiding over this meeting this evening. This public meeting has been called on matters pursuant to the Brookhaven zoning ordinance and specified on tonight's agenda. The January 8th, 2014 meeting is called to order. I'd like to offer a special welcome to -- we have three new commissioners this year. Caitlin Miller, who is not in attendance this evening. Bert Levy, my left. And Jeff O'Connell. So, as a way of introduction, I'll call the roll, and each commissioner will acknowledge their presence. Commissioner Shannon Cameron.
Present.
Commissioner Rob Francore.
Present.
Commissioner John Funny.
Present.
Commissioner Jeff O'Connell.
Present.
Commissioner Bert Levy.
Present.
And, as we said, Commissioner Caitlin Miller is -- that was coincidental, that was just alphabetical, too. She's not here. So, let the record show, we have six commissioners present, which means we do have a quorum, and we will proceed. At this time, I'm going to ask everybody, including myself, you'll check your cellphones. Everyone, just make sure we're on silent or more off, I'd appreciate it. See, do we have any visitors tonight? No, I don't think so. So, let me introduce Ms. Susan Cannon, Director of Community Development for the City of Brookhaven. Mr. Ben Song, Planner for the City of Brookhaven. And Mr. John Olson, Planner for the City of Brookhaven. There should be a number of copies of the agenda and other related documents at the back of the room when you came in. I'd also like to suggest, I think most of you have done it, I think you probably know it, that if you're going to make a comment tonight, we'll need you to fill out a comment card from the back and turn it into John. And then, when you come on up, we'll ask you to state your name and your current address, or who you represent. We'd like to know that. This Planning Commission is established by the Code of Ordinances of the City of Brookhaven. Our purpose is to conduct public hearings on land use, zoning changes, code text amendments, and other related matters. The Planning Commission's actions are not a final determination regarding the matters that are brought before us, but only a recommendation to the mayor and the city council, the viewpoint of this commission. I'd also like to say that in making our recommendations, we do our utmost to balance land use with the interests of the applicant, the neighboring community, and the entire city of Brookhaven. The commissioners are all intimately familiar with our city. We live here. We're your neighbors. And although not everyone will agree with the recommendations we make this evening, know that each of the members are voting to make Brookhaven a better place to live and work. So, with that, first order of business, we've had the roll call. We're all here, or most of us are here. And we need to approve the minutes. The first is approval of minutes of December 2nd, 2013 Planning Commission Work Session Meeting Minutes. We're not all -- because we've had a change. So, I'm going to ask the three members who were present at the December 2nd meeting, if there's a motion and either an approval. We did have a change in the minutes, and we received them late this afternoon, and we have a hard copy here. So, of the three members, I'm one, Commissioner Funny, Commissioner Shannon Cameron.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from our work session meeting on Wednesday.
Second.
And, all in favor? The three of us.
Aye.
Are you opposed? No? Sorry, guys. Teach you to not be there. The second item is approval of the December 4th Planning Commission regular meeting minutes. And we'll go through the same process, only three of us, the three that are present.
I'll make a motion that the regular Planning Commission meeting minutes be accepted for the December 4th meeting.
And I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? No. So, we have approval of the December 2nd work session meetings and the December 4th Planning Commission meeting minutes. Do we have any unfinished business to attend to?
Mr. Chairman, we do not.
We do not? Okay. So, we're going to go on to -- we're just rolling along here to the new business. Before we take up the agenda items this evening before us, let me give you an overview for those who have not attended these meetings before, the rules we'll be following this evening. The city staff will present a summary of the item that's before us and report on any remainder recommendations or findings that they have. Then we'll ask the applicant and/or their representative to come up, and they'll be given 10 minutes. It could all be used upfront to make the presentation and make any remarks, or they can reserve any portion of that 10 minutes for rebuttal after other people make a comment. We'll then have public comment, public remarks. We'll have 10 minutes for those who are in support of the agenda item, and 10 minutes for those who oppose. Each speaker, as I said earlier, will need to submit a comment card before they speak. And when you come up, we'll ask you to restate your name and your address. Be aware that others will need time to present, so we'd like to be brief and succinct, but we, you know, we don't want you to rush. We want to hear what your position is, and we want to help us understand why you've taken that position. We don't want to rush anyone, but we're going to ask you to limit your remarks to three minutes. And we're going to try to get everybody in. I know everyone's going to divide three into 10 and wonder, but we're going to get everybody -- as long as everybody is, I'd say succinct and brief, and there's new information, we're going to -- we'll figure out something. Then after that, we'll give the applicant the remainder of whatever of their 10 minutes, if there is any. Then we'll close the public hearing portion of the meeting, and the commissioners, the six that are present tonight, will have an opportunity at that point to ask questions of the staff, the applicant, or any of the speakers. And then we'll vote on the matter before us. The commission can vote to recommend approval to the city council, recommend denial, or recommend the application be deferred. So, that's kind of the process we're going to follow. There's a whole procedure on it, but that's what we're going to do tonight. Okay, so the first item is on the agenda this evening is RZ 13-11, and SLUP 13-01 and SLUP 13-02. Ms. Cannon?
Mr. Chairman, before Mr. Song makes a presentation and while he's preparing to put the site plan up on the overhead, I'd like to make a comment that case RZ 13-11, SLUP 13-01, and SLUP 13-02, the applicant is asking for a deferral. However, the Planning Commission is not authorized to grant a deferral. Therefore, you will be required to hold your public hearing. As this approaches the council agenda later in the month, the request for deferral will be heard by the council for consideration of such. You also have received additional public comment that we received after generation of the packet, in addition to information from the Board of Education that we received today. And Mr. Song will go over that with you as he presents the staff report. And as always, we did stipulate to the full contents of the staff report. Thank you.
Yeah, before, let's make sure, because we have some people here, I want to make sure it's clear. Although we cannot defer ourselves, we have to open up the public hearing. We can recommend that the city council defer. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
You can also, just for clarification, as you take your position and make your recommendation on this case, you can also recommend that the council defer this case back to you. So, that is something that you could incorporate in your motion.
Okay. I just want to make that so that the people who are here tonight understood that.
Right. Thank you.
I appreciate that. All right, so, Ben?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The case before you is RZ 13-11 with SLUPS 13-01 and 13-02. The property is located at 4170 Ashford-Dunwoodie Road and 4106 Lake Huron Drive, 18th District Landlaw's 329 and 330. The property is currently 18.33 acres in size. The existing zoning is O&amp;I conditional. That stands for office institution. And there are essentially is a change in conditions with the site plan as they are proposing the same zoning within the O&amp;I zoning district. So, the subject property is located on the west side of Ashford-Dunwoodie Road and is bounded by Lake Huron Drive and Interstate 285 to the north, Parkside Place to the west, and Perimeter Summit Parkway to the south. There's currently an existing five-story office building with an associate surface parking. The site was originally rezoned to O&amp;I pursuant to CZ 78079 through DeKalb County. Through the years, there have been several alterations that have come before this property, with the latest alteration occurring in 1997. The subject property currently is entitled to, as approved by DeKalb County, for 715 square feet of total net usable office space, which is inclusive of an existing office building at 215 square feet of net usable area, and additional 500,000 square feet that can be distributed amongst two additional office buildings. In addition to that, one of the buildings was conditioned to go up to as high as 18 stories in height. Per this latest request, the applicant seeks, again, to rezone from O&amp;I conditional to O&amp;I to implement a mixed-use project that will consist of 500 multifamily units spread over two five-story high-rise complexes, 250,000 square feet additional office space contained within a single 10-story office building, in addition to what is existing out there. Again, it's a 277,206 gross square foot office building. Two special land use permits have been requested by the applicant as part of the rezoning request. The first, which is SLUP 13-01, deals with the, to exceed the building height maximum of five stories or 70 feet. SLUP 13-02 deals with the proposed high-rise apartments to be developed within the O&amp;I zoning district. Department would note that the subject property did initially go through a DRI review in 1991, and we went before, in conjunction with the applicant, with their cooperation, went before ARC again to see that if this revision to the plan warranted a DRI, and they've determined that it does not.
Would you explain just?
Sure.
DRI is, just, you don't have to explain it, just what is it?
Yeah, DRI stands for Development of Regional Impacts. If it meets a certain threshold determined by ARC, we would have to go through more stipulated.
Sure.
So, again, another thing, in addition to that, based upon the request that has been made, staff has found that, based upon a perimeter center, livable centers initiative plan that was conducted previously, I believe, in 2002. Not exactly sure off the top of my head, but a perimeter of livable centers initiative plan that was prepared, found that this type of development will be consistent for that area.
In 2002.
2002. Thank you.
All right, so the LCI was done in 2002?
Yes. The LCI completed in 2002, recommended that this type of mixed-use development would be consistent, especially on that subject property. The site plan submitted by the applicant shows several surface parking spaces with the majority of parking provided within three proposed separate parking decks. Each multifamily complex will be developed with a separate parking deck for resident parking. The site plan indicates that Development A, which is one of the multifamily developments that has been requested, would consist of 260 rental units with an average floor.
Development A is the, one of the lower right?
Yes, it's to the lower right, at the intersection nearest to Perimeter Summit Parkway and Parkside Place. That is scheduled for 260 rental units with an average floor area of 850 square feet. The rental apartment building would be five stories and incorporate 5 1/2 level parking deck. And I'll get into the height sort of distinction later on. Element B, which is at the other corner at Perimeter Summit Parkway and Ashford-Dunwoodie Road, is indicated for 24 owner-occupied condominium units. And again, it will be on five stories with a 5.25 level parking deck. Development C is a proposed 10-story, 250,000 square foot office building with a 5.5 level parking deck servicing office uses on the subject property. There are three existing access points for the subject property to locate on Ashford-Dunwoodie Road, one off Perimeter Summit Parkway, and a new ingress egress has been proposed nearest to Parkside Place, which would be aligned with the Perimeter Summit Boulevard entrance into Perimeter Summit. So, in addition to this request, variances do not come before the Planning Commission, but there are three variances that may, that would be required as part of this request that has been made. To quickly touch upon it, the first variance would be related to a reduction in parking. Currently, per the site plan, the applicant is showing 2,665 parking spaces. Based upon what has been submitted, staff has calculated that 3,109 parking spaces would be appropriate. So, a variance would be required. Two, encroachment of building of Development B, which encroaches into the front yard setback associated with Ashford-Dunwoodie Road, a variance would be required for that. And lastly, deals with building mass particularly associated with multifamily buildings. Whenever an applicant seeking to exceed 250 feet along any wall elevation, again, specific for multifamily buildings, they would have to request a variance if they want to exceed 250 feet. To the north of the subject property are additional O&amp;I zone property in this place, in this case, it will be Hilton Garden Inn. To the west, across Parkside Place, again, is Perimeter Summit, which is also Zone O&amp;I. Across Parkside Place, again, there's also a multifamily residential building, Villa Sonoma Condominiums, which is part of the Perimeter Summit development overall, and that's also Zone O&amp;I. East across Ashford-Dunwoodie Road is the Ashford Perimeter Office Building, Zone O&amp;I. To the east across Ashford-Dunwoodie, again, further east, are single-family residential zoning districts, zone districts, Zone R100. To the south of Perimeter Summit Parkway, again, are additional single-family residential uses. Staff has identified, based on the future development map and DeKalb County's comprehensive plan, which we effectively have adopted from DeKalb, represents this property as a regional center of character area. Under the plan, the areas envisioned for a variety of uses that would contribute to the reduction of automobile travel while promoting walkability and increased traffic usage. We felt that the proposed development would encourage walkability as the property is in close proximity to regional shopping center and two nearby MARTA stations, in particular the Dona Medical Center. And we felt that the development, as requested, would appear to be in conformity with the policy intent of the comprehensive plan. Perimeter Summit has been developed with a mixed-use concept incorporating office uses. Again, that's to the west of the property. And we feel that, based upon that, the proposed request would be suitable to the area. We also felt that the subject property as is also maintains an economic uses currently zone. Based upon the request, the proposed rezoning, staff felt that it would not appear to be a result that would adversely affect the existing use or usability of adjacent nearby And also, again, if there are any conditions that would support what is being requested, staff would note that essentially what has been requested would effectively reduce the height of buildings from what has been currently approved for the site from 18 stories to now 10 stories as the tallest building. In addition, I repeat that the Perimeter Center Livable Center Initiative Study completed in 2002 recommended that a potential location for a high-density mixed-use development with primarily office and higher-density residential uses would be appropriate for the site. There are no known historic buildings, sites, districts, or archaeological resources identified by the applicant or nor by staff. To determine if there's excessive use or burdensome use of existing streets, transportation facilities, utilities, or schools, to date, the city has not received a response from DeKalb County offices. However, we did receive comments from the school board, and I'll go over that shortly. And I'll quickly, again, go over the criteria that are to be applied for the special land use permit requests. First, it deals with the adequacy of the size of the site for the contemplated request. Staff has found that the adequate size of the proposed use and appropriate setbacks and law coverage have been provided. Adequate land area is available for the proposed use associated with off-street parking. However, the applicant has requested variance to reduce parking based on their desire and determination that the parking ratio required by the city zoning ordinance may not be warranted for the proposed development, but not due to the size of the land. In regards to the compatibility of the proposed use with adjacent properties, the proposed development will be compatible with existing uses found in the area, in particular, Perimeter Summit development, which has been developed with a mixed office residential retail and hotel uses. Adequacy of public services, public facilities, and utilities to serve the use contemplated. Based on the previous approvals related to the subject property for high-density office use, it would suggest that adequate public service are available to serve the proposed development as submitted. In regards to adequacy of the public street on which the use is proposed to be located, to better ascertain traffic impacts, staff has placed a condition requesting that the applicant submit for a traffic impact analysis, that is to be reviewed by the city's Public Works Director for appropriate traffic improvement measures that will be applied to the site at time of land disturbance permit. Whether or not existing land uses located along access routes to the site will be adversely affected by the character of the vehicles or the volume of traffic. Based upon a trip generation memo submitted by the applicant, it appears that the traffic generated by the proposed development, when compared to what's currently allowed on the site, during AM and peak hours, will see comparable or less in terms of traffic. But overall, there may be an increase, but the traffic impact analysis will provide us a better indication of how the traffic would be impacted by this development. Ingress and egress to the subject property and to all proposed buildings, structures, and use thereon, multiple points of access would be provided on the subject property, which could help to enhance internal traffic flow and access by emergency vehicle onto the subject property. Additionally, all access points would have adequate access to public sidewalks that have been put in by the perimeter CID. Whether or not the proposed use will create adverse impacts upon adjoining land based upon noise, smoke, or odor, staff has found that we don't believe there would be any negative impacts associated with this development. Whether or not the proposed use will create adverse impacts upon adjoining land used by reason of hours of operation, the proposed mixed-use development would not create adverse impacts to adjoining land uses by reasons of hours of operation, as the proposed use would incorporate a residential component and office use similar to what's found nearby. We also found that the proposed use would not, would be similar manner of operation with existing uses found in the area. Whether or not the proposed plan is otherwise consistent with the requirements of the zoning district classification, it appears that the proposed development will be consistent with the requirements of the zoning district, with the exception of parking requirements as stated. The applicant has applied for two special land use permits, again, to exceed the building height and to allow for construction of high-rise apartments. Whether or not the use is consistent with the policy of the comprehensive plan, as previously stated, the proposed development would be consistent with the policies of the comprehensive plan as explained. Whether or not there's an adequate, sorry, whether or not proposed plan provides all required buffers, staff has stated that all required buffer zones appear to be, have been provided in the plans. Whether or not there's an adequate provision of refuse and service area, refuse and service areas have not been identified on the site plan submitted by the applicant. However, any future plans for such areas would require prior approval from DeKalb County. Whether the length of time for which the special land use permit is granted should be limited duration, staff felt that time or duration constraints would not be appropriate for the proposed request. Whether or not the scale, size scale and masking of proposed buildings are appropriate in relation to the size of the subject property, the height of the proposed buildings will be substantially lower than what is currently approved. Again, it would be reduced from 18 stories to now 10 stories. Whether the proposed plan will adversely affect historic buildings as sites or districts, as previously stated, staff is unaware of such known historic buildings, sites or districts. Whether the proposed use satisfies the requirements contained within the supplemental regulations for such special land use permit, again, we state that supplemental regulations as it relates to the special land use permit requests have been met, except for the requirement provided in Section 27788E3, as it states that no structure is to exceed 250 feet in length along any elevation of a multifamily building. Whether or not the proposed building as a result of its proposed height will create a negative shadow impact on adjoining lot or building, negative shadow impact would not be anticipated from this request, as all buildings proposed would be similar height and projection, and a reduction in height from previously approved 18-story office building would be accomplished by this request. Whether proposed use would result in disproportionate, excuse me, proliferation of what or similar uses, of that or similar uses in the subject character area, the proposed use would benefit the surrounding area by providing availability of additional residential options and reduce the proliferation of similar office uses found in the area. Lastly, whether the proposed use would be consistent with the needs of the neighborhood or to the community as a whole, be compatible with the neighborhood and would not be in conflict with the overall object of the comprehensive plan, we felt that the proposed development would be consistent with the intent and policies of the comprehensive plan and would be compatible with established neighborhood and with existing developments found in the area. To quickly go over the comments provided by the department, again, Public Works has requested a traffic impact study be provided through a condition. Also, the typical installation of stormwater management systems, or if there are existing systems, we would like to receive a post-construction agreement. Brookhaven Police have indicated that there have been, there are activities that are presented within that area, that future consideration and additional studies would determine if there is a need for increased service within the area. MARTA also chimed in and provided some comments. Mainly, they stated that they have no objection to what has been requested, that it may be a benefit to the existing MARTA stations that are nearby. And again, as I alluded to, we did receive comments from the DeKalb County School Board today, this afternoon. Based upon the proposal, it appears that there's going to be increase of 50 total students. And what they have stated is, in particular, to Montgomery Elementary School, which already exceeds capacity, they felt that, based upon this request, the overcrowning would actually increase from 109.2% to 113.4%, which may require an addition of a portable unit typically located on the site to accommodate for the potential students that may come out of this request. Based upon the review of staff, staff has recommended approval of RZ 13-11, as well as SLUPS 13-01 and 13-02, with the stipulated conditions that have been provided in your report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ben. I guess with that, I'm sorry.
And, Mr. Chairman, we did provide copies of the report on the back table.
The zoning, the school board report?
To you, because we just received it. We provided copies of the staff report in the back of the room, which list all the conditions.
Okay, great. The question was, does the additional school board comments, are those back there as well, or is?
No, they are not.
All right, so if anyone has, they could get them through you, Ben, if there's a need for that.
Sure.
If anyone has a question with that. I guess with that, we'll open up the public hearing. Or is the staff report part of the public hearing? I'm going to open the public hearing now, but.
Well, actually, the applicant will come forward.
And that, well, that's when the public hearing opens.
Correct.
Just a question of whether it's before or after. So, we're going to open the public, we're going to open the public hearing and ask the applicant to come forward. And, Mr., why don't you introduce yourself? I know.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Doug Dillard with Wythe, Illinois, Curran, Wilco. My history on this property goes back over 30 years. This was originally a part of the Spruill Farm. We represented Post Properties in the late '70s and early '80s, and asked for eight units to the acre, got denied, wound up going to Supreme Court, and when we came back, this is what we got. I think, I think over the, over the time, that we've got a much better development because we had the Lake Huron subdivisions and all the stuff that you know that has taken place south of 285 between Ashford-Dunwoodie and St. Joes. We've had some meaningful discussions with area residents, primarily the Oak Forest neighborhood. We've not yet been able to accomplish what we want to accomplish with them. We also have other area residents that are, we're in the process of talking to, trying to work out the conditions. I think, in a basic way, Susan and Ben have done a good job relative to the analysis of our request. We feel that the overall impact of this development is much less than what is currently zone, both from a traffic standpoint, from a use standpoint. Realize that the school is an issue, but this will be primarily a one-bedroom community, so the number of students, we think, we need to meet with the school board and be sure we understand their, how they came up with their calculations. But the long story is, we're asking that you recommend a deferral. We ask that you recommend a deferral so that it will come back to you next month, okay? So, I want to be very clear that we're not trying to avoid your recommendation to city council. If it comes back to you next month, then it will then go to city council on the 25th of February. We've got a couple of variances that we're asking for. One is setback from Ashford-Dunwoodie Road. One is setback from Ashford Dunwoodie Road, the other one is the 250-foot length issue, and the other is the, is the height in, for the residential deal. The overall height of the buildings already approved in the development will be less. We've got an 18-story office building approved now. We're reducing the office building to, to 10, and there's another 10-story building along with a parking deck approved, which all exceed the five-story height limit that we would have for the residential. So, we think the overall visual impact's going to be less, we think the overall density's going to be less, our traffic is going to be less, and so we think this is going to be a more compatible use, given the urban nature of this area as it continues to grow and as the needs of this community address itself. So, we would ask that you deferral. We have given everybody written notice of that. I know the Coles are here, and there might be some other folks that are here from the neighborhoods that, that are interested in, in talking to us. We want to be sure we've had an opportunity to do that. So, we would ask that you recommend a deferral, full-cycle deferral, which means it will come back to you.
I assume you're reserving your time?
Huh? Yeah. If there's, if there's a reason for that, yes, I would.
And I should say, my involvement with this goes back as long as yours does, by the way. All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Dillard. I appreciate, we appreciate that. And we do have in our packet, and I assume it's in the staff recommendation packet for everybody, your, your letter requesting a full cycle. So, with that, we'll now ask if there is, and because of, of the request for a recommendation to defer, I'd say that any remarks that are made, you can make them on the project itself if you choose, or you could direct your remarks to the support or opposition to the discussion of deferral. So, with that, if you've given a comment card, if you haven't, you still come up and give us if anybody in support of either the application itself or the request for a deferral, if anybody would like to speak on that. John, did you have anybody or anybody?
I have.
Somebody, so we have a few, okay.
We have four.
Okay, I guess the question is supporter or...
I have four.
Well, supportive, supportive of the application or support.
And, and I want to make general comments about the project.
We'll get everybody up if we get an order or not.
I do support the full-cycle deferral. Oh, sorry.
Do we have speaker card?
Yeah, Eric Hobbes.
Okay. I didn't know who you were.
So, if you'll give us your name and your address, please.
My name is Eric Hobbesfin. I live at 1587 Brawley Circle in Brookhaven. I'm on the other side of the lake in the Murphy-Candler neighborhood from this development. So...
And I'm sorry, give me your name again, just...
Eric Hobdisfin.
Got it.
So, Alan and Holly live closer to me, so obviously I'll defer to them, but I do support a full-cycle deferral to come back here. I do want to say, in reading about this project, I noticed there's a sign banned on the south side of the building to protect the residential neighborhoods. I think that would be needed on the east side. I am concerned about reducing the setback requirement towards Ashford Dunwoodie on the southern side of the property, since that's where it abuts the residential development across the street, and that's where we may need a buffer. Generally, I support mixed use. I think, I think everything that's been said about it is right. I would like to make sure that we don't build all the residential before building the office building. We need to do, stage it somehow. I would like to see provisions for a shuttle service to the MARTA stations. Ultimately, improving the bike pad to the medical center station is needed in terms of entrance on the east side of the MARTA station. That's beyond this project, but maybe they can take a role in having that done. And I want to make sure the entrance to Parkside Place gets built, because that will be needed for the additional traffic. And otherwise, I'd also like to see them explore retail on the ground floor of the residential apartments, and that would be the rest of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much, Eric. Anyone else in support of the applicant or the deferral? Okay, great. Just give us your name and where you, where you live.
My name is Dr. Ralph Fred, and I live at Villa Sonoma Parkway, 10 Perimeter Summit. And, and good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. And my position is that I'd offer conditional support for the plan. Multi-use is terrific. There are two particularly ticklish issues with traffic as it relates to residential that I can speak to directly. Parkside Place, Lake Huron, and Perimeter Summit or Perimeter Center will get total gridlock at least three or four times a month, and that gridlock will last till about 7:30 or a quarter of eight. Now, the difficulty there is if a resident leaves the location, you're in Villa Sonoma, you leave, you cannot get back to your residency. So, I think, I think most of us are culturally accustomed to traffic when we're trying to leave the office. However, it's very difficult when you become trapped in traffic, having left the house to go to target, and you literally cannot get back to your place. So, my conditional support for this would be for some traffic studies to figure out what do we have to do to take care of that gridlock? And again, that gridlock is generally between 5:30 and 7:30, about four times a month, typically on a Wednesday or a Thursday. Okay?
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you.
I apologize, doctor. How do you spell your last name? Is it F.R.I.D.?
Yeah, it's F.R.I.D.
Okay.
Thank you.
Was that AM or PM?
Uh, PM.
Okay, great.
Sorry, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else? Do we have anyone else? Okay. Did you have a call?
4219.
Just one more second. There's a, there's a Holly Bates Snow, and I don't know if that's opposition or support.
I think that was, we have, we have an email from...
We'll have a speaker card.
Okay, you have a speaker card, so...
But I don't know if it's...
Miss, let's, Alan, if you wouldn't mind, let, well, it doesn't matter. You'll both get to...
I just don't know if it's, I was just trying to do it.
I think it's in support of the deferral, is that correct?
That's correct.
I think that's correct from what we've seen. So, whichever one of you wants to come up and speak, if you're in support of the application and/or the deferral.
Okay. Alan Cole, 4219 Ashwoodie Trail, Oak Forest Hills neighborhood, 114 homes directly east of this development. We're definitely for the deferral, the full deferral, so that we can meet with the party and vet the whole thing. So, they, they're open to it, we're for it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now.
Good evening. My name is Holly Bates Snow. I am a board member with the Nancy Creek Heights Neighborhood Network. We are registered with the Secretary of State. We have approximately 150 homes in our neighborhood, just south of the development on the east side, so just south of the Oak Forest neighborhood. And I want to appreciate, Mr. Dillard has agreed to meet with us. However, during the holidays, it's been quite trying to get a schedule so that we can have a neighborhood meeting, so that we can have input. We haven't taken a position on the project one way or another. However, we have distributed the plan to our neighborhood and have had concerns raised as to the traffic study. For example, does the traffic study consider the new hotel that's going in? There's obviously a huge development that's going in right now on Hammond. Those of us at Transverse every day, which I think maybe most of us in this room, across the, the direction to Hammond, cutting through that neighborhood, it is gridlocked in the afternoon. So, we want to make sure that whatever traffic study that is being done is taking into account all of the new projects that are currently underway or being proposed, including there is a tract of property that's been for sale for many years. I think it's six to seven acres on the east side of Ashford Dunwoodie. And we want to make sure that whatever happens is, is considering the egress out of the neighborhood into the neighborhood. I think there have been some concerns about having access to retail for the community as well as just having an opportunity. It sounds like a very good project, and one we want to work with Mr. Dillard and his client to make sure that we have an understanding of what it might entail in terms of how it might impact us. So, for those reasons, we support having a delay so that we can have neighborhood input and be able to come back with you at the next meeting and give you a recommendation or recommendation with conditional considerations. So, that, thank you very much.
Thank, thank you. Okay, do we have anybody?
I have no more speaker cards. I do have a small comment I need to make, or a short comment I need to make after you're, after you ask if there are any more speakers.
Okay. Are there any more, anyone else who want to comment and, and support? Do you want to make comments before the people, anyone who's opposed, or you want to make a...
I'll do it at the end.
Okay. So, do we have anyone who, any cards, or anyone who would like to speak in opposition to the application or in opposition to the request to defer? Okay, do you want to make, Susan, would you like to make a comment then? I guess there is no one else, and then we'll close the hearing after your comments.
Sure. Although it is, is within the report, because of some of the comments that were made, I just need to kind of clarify that we do have 19 conditions that we've proposed. And just summarizing those, number one is a maximum of 500 units for SLUP 1302. Number two is a limit of 527,206 gross foot feet of office. Number three requires development in accordance with the site plan. Number four limits non-residential buildings to no more than 10 stories. Number five indicates that parking decks shall not be taller than 70 feet. Number six requires exterior elevations of multifamily buildings and parking decks be constructed primarily of natural stone, masonry, brick, glass, and stucco, et cetera. There's more relative to the architectural treatment. Number seven requires that parking facilities for the high-rise apartments be located at the interior of the subject property and be surrounded by associated apartment buildings and landscaping materials to screen the parking facilities from view of the right-of-way except where left open for vehicular and pedestrian access. Number eight requires service and refuse facilities be located to the interior of the subject property. Number nine requires all light, lighting associated with the development to be incorporated with a cutoff design and be directed inward and downward. Number 10 requires signage at the top of buildings to be directed away from residential properties to the south, and that internally limited signs shall not be installed as to be visible from residential properties. Number 10 requires the submittal of a combination plat. Number 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, and 17 relate to the requirement for right-of-way, road improvements, a traffic study, and incorporation of additional traffic study components. Number 18 requires for acceptable stormwater management practices, and number 19 requires the, that the developer is responsible for future development to be compliant with the Georgia Stormwater Management Manual, Stormwater Runoff Quality Standard, by providing measures that treat the required water to quality volume through evapotranspiration, infiltration, and/or evaporation. I just wanted to clarify that because there are several conditions, and even though it's part of the record, we really didn't address that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so with that, I'm going to close this portion of the public hearing and open it up for the commissions, to commissioners, to ask questions of either their staff or anyone who has spoken, which is, right now, we have, anyone who's spoken?
Ken, I have a question.
Okay, so Commissioner Ken.
Susan, this is for you, for you and Ben in regards to the zoning information or the school board information. How will that impact or potentially impact your conditions? Because that's a pretty substantial jump for that elementary school. And will it? Can we make decisions based on the impact of the local schools?
We will not include a condition relative to the schools. There is a part of the analysis criteria in the staff report relates to the impact of the development on schools. We've addressed that by indicating that in all likelihood, there will be an impact. We do now have a report that indicates how much of an impact, but we will not have a condition in our report relative to the school system.
Okay. And then, I guess my next question would be for Doug. Do you mind, Doug?
Go ahead.
I, I saw that one of the buildings is, are one bedrooms. The rentals appear to be one bedrooms at 850 square feet. Is that accurate?
Right.
What about the condos? What's the square footage of those?
They're all one and twos.
So, the two bedrooms...
Six, there's, they're basically 60% ones and 40% twos in both the condos and the apartments.
So, the apartments will have two bedrooms as well?
Right. And, and the apartments are going to be built to the point where they can be converted later on, but the condo market is just not strong enough to absorb it. So, what will, what will happen is we will, we'll probably build the rental units first, and then we'll build the condos. But there are two, it's 250, but they're one and two bedrooms.
So, there'll be a mix in both?
Yes.
So, there will be an impact from the schools?
Yeah, but I'm just going to tell you, the, we'll, we'll analyze that school, the school issue, but it-like traffic is not sufficient to justify denial of a rezoning request, because that is an obligation of the school board to provide for the education of our children, and where they're failing to do that, that's, that's their issue. We're going to create a tax base that's going to certainly justify the increase in school facilities within this, within this arena. Matter of fact, as we all know, our school taxes are the, the most we pay. So, I'm just going to suggest to you, while we, we are very sensitive to that, we don't think that that'll be a sufficient indication to deny the, to deny the application.
Okay.
We're willing to work with the school board, we want to do that, but because they've not done what they've needed to do, this ain't, this ain't no surprise. And Montgomery's been there as long as I can remember. You know, for them not to anticipate what's been going on, that's too bad. That's, that's, that's real. So, we might look at redistricting, we might have to look at, at shifting the lines and that kind of thing in order to provide adequate, because I know Montgomery's got a limited campus, is a limit of what they can do, but this, this is no surprise.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Let's go here, and then we'll go to you. Is that right? Okay. Mr. Funny?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Song, you mentioned earlier that there was a request for approximately 2,000 parking spaces versus what is required for the 3,600, is that correct?
As indicated in the staff report, the exact numbers are the way we calculated based upon the information provided for the site plan. The total parking required per our current zoning ordinance would be 3,109 total spaces. And based upon the plans and supplemental information submitted by the applicant, it appears that currently 2,665 spaces will be provided.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Dillard, I have a couple of questions for you.
Is he going to have to pop up and...
I'm sorry.
I think he is, though, because I'm going to ask him.
I'm sorry, Mr. Dillard.
You're making me earn my feelings with the deferral request, aren't you?
I, I like the idea of the mixed-use development, and typically, we do parking reductions because we realize that some people that are going to live in the units are going to work there, but we also look at reduction when it's connected to a transit station. So, those are some of the methods that we know of that would require a demand, a reduction in parking. Can you explain a bit about how you came up with the reduction in parking space requirement?
Well, it's, it is, first of all, we think the overall parking requirements, and we're going to find that as we become more urban. And this whole area has an opportunity to provide an example for the country of how you take a suburban shopping area, basically, with some office and convert it into an urban node that's got transit-oriented access. So, this is, this overall area can become a premier area for transit-oriented development as an example of how you do it throughout the country. And the other unique opportunity here is you've got two separate jurisdictions that have an opportunity to work together to make it happen with Dunwoodie and Brookhaven. I'm involved in the Gold Kids site, I'm also doing the State Farm deal, so we're very much aware of the overall impact that's going to have. MARTA is very much at the table in all those, in all those situations. So, our traffic analysis in, in calling for the reduction of, of overall parking requirements anticipates the use of, of access to MARTA. Also, it anticipates the pedestrian access to the non-residential uses that are located close by. So, what we're, what we're hopeful of in, in the, in the plan that you will also ultimately see is that we're, we're also trying to create a small village within the context of the existing office, the future office in these two residential buildings. So, there will be residential, I mean, retail within the, within the confines of this So, there will be residential, I mean, retail within the confines of this development. So, we're trying to provide local services, commercial, retail-type facilities that you would need, a small grocery store, market, and that kind of thing, as well as restaurants and what is otherwise typical. So, the answer, it's a long answer to say yes, that we know that we've got some transportation issues. But our analysis thus far shows that we don't need the parking requirements that are normally shown and is an example. I remember when we did Ravinia and when we did the Spruill Farm initially, the traffic analysis as far as actual uses were concerned was somewhere in the neighborhood of 3.25 spaces per thousand, where the ordinance required 4,000 spaces per thousand. So, what we're trying to do is to create pedestrian options, to create pedestrian alternatives, reduce the parking, get people out of their automobiles, get them on the streets, and create a more urban feel. So, to do that, we've got to have residential. It can't be office where everybody's coming in and leaving every day. So, I think we've got to look at a higher percentage of residential. Now, granted, we've got school issues that we've got to deal with, too. But overall, I think that when we do that, we'll find we'll have a much more balanced situation. We'll have a transit-oriented development and we'll have less traffic congestion, hopefully, than we do today.
When I think about the transit-oriented development, I think that's good. Right now, there's no transit connection. Will you be looking at that?
The only real connection you've got is the flyover deal, which is, I refer to it as Road to Nowhere. It was originally supposed to go, when we started that, back when we did North Park in the early 80s, the Glen Ridge Connector was supposed to come all the way around. Well, I'm just going to tell you, the Burnham neighborhood stopped that. And I think Rebecca Williams will confirm that that's exactly what happened. So, when that road, when we did Cox, we dedicated that right-of-way for the flyover. And we also, when we did the parking facilities for St. Joe's, reserved right-of-way coming up to that Ramada Station at St. Joe's and to connect to Johnson Ferry and the Glen Ridge Connector. The Burnham neighborhood stopped that. Jeanne Williams and her folks stopped it. So, I mean, I'm not telling on anybody. I'm just telling you, that's just what happened.
You just did.
Well, I mean, no, that's just what happened. But it is what it is. So, I think as we look at what has been approved in this Lake Huron deal, and it went to the Supreme Court, too. I mean, we took that up there twice. When we look at what we envision and what's there, what we envision is not there. But what is approved is several million square feet of undeveloped office at this point, okay? And so, we need to look at how do we handle the transit? So, we've got to extend both to the St. Joe's station and to the perimeter center station. The PCID is very critical in all this, and we're meeting with them, I might say on a daily basis, but certainly biweekly. So, that all that gets put together from a transportation standpoint because it's very, very important, particularly as 285 and 400 are improved, which I think will ultimately, in spite of the splash being denied, I think that will happen because it's too important to the region for it not to happen.
Thank you. Before you sit down, I'll ask, is your question to Mr. Dillon?
Well...
I was just trying to save.
It's all right. Go ahead and have a seat.
I had a question.
I had a question as well.
Before I had, well, if they have questions for Mr. Dillon, go ahead. I am talking about three, one new condition and two amendments to the existing conditions.
All right. Well, let's ask.
Before we get to that. But I was commenting on the first two questions, though. One is, I'm surprised you guys aren't looking at cross-parking because those apartment, parking lots are going to be more or less empty between 8:00 and 5:00 in the office lot. It's going to be empty after 5:00. And maybe some cross-parking easements between the office user and the apartment owner. That solves a lot of your parking problems.
Absolutely. Absolutely. That will be done.
And the second...
And that's part of the study, by the way.
Okay. On the schools, while I guess we wouldn't deny it because we're worried about adding kids to schools, one way we can lessen the impact is to restrict the number of three-bedroom units. So, right now, there are one- and two-bedroom units. You really, I mean, you start adding kids in those, when you really go to a third-bedroom configuration, you're already talking about one- and two-bedroom units. So, just something to...
Yeah. We're at one and twos. We're not talking about threes.
Okay. Okay. We have our Commissioner Cole?
Yes. I had a couple of questions. One, this is the second month that we've seen this. This project dating back to 1991, and obviously revisions have been made throughout the years. Why have you not had the opportunity prior to the holiday season to meet with the neighbors?
We have.
You have?
We met with them before the holidays.
All right. But I guess they are now asking for additional time to...
Well, yeah. I mean, we're looking to, as Oak Forest, for an example, we're looking to do some traffic calming devices within their neighborhood, okay? For them. So, I mean, there, any number of the other neighborhoods, we've not had an opportunity. Wendy Butler called me right before the holidays. So, no, we just need some time. These things take time. I mean, in particular, since Thanksgiving, Christmas, I don't know what your experience has been.
No. They're extremely busy.
Been pretty frustrated trying to get folks together.
Sure. No, I understand. Another question, and we talk about, and you see it a lot across the country, these mixed-use developments, this live-work. I don't have any statistics, perhaps you do, of what percentage of residents that end up living in these mixed-use developments actually work on that development? I can't imagine it's extremely high.
Well, there's going to be an option because the ratio of residential to office is extremely And what every study will show you today is that the percentage of single-family detached on a large lot, which traditionally has been 75% of the market and 25% for apartments, condos, townhouses, and attached or cluster, is reversing with the millennium. There's baby boomers that are retiring that want to stay in the same community. They don't want to have to move to a retirement community that's outside of the community that they've been in for 30 years. So, and I would send you to Chris Leinberger's article that he wrote within the last six months, and Chris Nelson's article that he wrote that's entitled, "This Ain't Your Parents' Housing Market." So, what our children want is going to be different than what we want. And while they might grow into a single-family detached for a period of time when they start having children, a higher percentage of those people are not going to move into a single-family detached. They're going to stay in an urban environment, particularly if the schools are good.
Okay. Great. One last question. I know traffic is a big concern for everyone, yourself included. In this mixed-use development, obviously with the office, we'll have lots of morning rush hour, evening rush hour. With the addition of the 500 units of residence, that'll create, I believe, some more traffic during non-business hours, weekend hours, and whatnot. On top of that, do you anticipate a large amount of retail and/or restaurants in this that would bring traffic, you know, 9:00, 10:00, 11:00 o'clock at night and Saturdays and Sundays?
It's going to be more convenience retail. It's not going to be destination retail, okay? And having gone within the last 15 years from an hour and 25-minute commute to a three-minute commute from a big house on 20 acres to a condo in Buckhead, I have died and gone to heaven. So, I think we're going to see, we're going to see a lot more of that. But that commute is real, and I think that people are going to become less tolerant of it. Now, what will happen, I think, north is we're going to see the urban pods develop in Alpharetta and Roswell and Sandy Springs, the same thing here. And what's going to, what should happen is that we encourage a higher density of residential in close proximity to where we work.
Thank you. Okay. Great.
Thank you.
I have two questions.
Okay.
Convenience retail, for those of us who are not quite sure, obviously, destination retail, restaurants, convenience retail is a grocery store? Is it just one of those little shops for the office park during the day?
Dick Williams dubbed me the Darth Vader of the neighborhood about 30 years ago. I'm an organic farmer. We sell to about 20 restaurants here in Atlanta, and we sell to markets on the weekend. I look forward to selling my organic vegetables in a small retail facility in this development.
So, that type of development?
Yeah.
I like that idea. Okay. Second question. In regards to Oak Forest and the traffic calming devices, what are you talking about in specific to that?
I was not present during those meetings, and we have not gotten back to Allen with the study yet. We hopefully will do that within the next week because I understand it has been completed by the client. We have not yet met with Holly's group. We look forward to doing that, so we don't really know what those issues are.
And what kind of study did you do?
Traffic.
So, you did a traffic study through Oak Forest?
Traffic calming. They had some traffic calming issues within their neighborhood, yes.
Okay. So, you did a traffic study of Oak Forest?
We did a traffic study for the whole area, and then we looked at specific, at some issues that they were concerned about relative to the internal traffic patterns within their subdivision.
Within Oak Forest?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Right. Okay. Great. Thank you. I have a couple of questions, but not for you, actually.
Oh.
That I'll ask. Actually, Alan Cole, you didn't tell me when you stood up, were you commenting as a citizen, as a resident, or were you commenting as an organized part of Oak Forest?
Oak Forest Hills Association.
Okay. And so, my follow-up question to you, because I know I saw it in Holly Snow's email. What have you done to communicate to your, I'm just curious what you're doing to communicate to your...
We've sent emails to everybody, and I've made personal visits to several.
Okay.
Trying to drum up.
Okay.
Tonight, it looks like we're going to get a little more, so that's good.
Okay. Thank you.
And then, we're going to set up an area meeting.
Okay. Thank you. I always, because, you know, I live, I, believe me, I understand between homeowners associations and civic associations, and the question was, were you an individual speaking or is a...
And the first thing when we met with him was, we wanted it deferred, and they agreed to.
Okay. Great.
Because he said we couldn't get people together during the holidays.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd like to, well, I want to talk about the conditions, so...
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
So, I mean, is this...
You have a question? Who's question?
Well, I think it's a question for Susan.
Okay.
Because I'd like to recommend an additional condition, a condition 20, and two modifications to existing conditions.
Stan, can I ask a question now?
This is, yeah.
Sorry.
This is assuming we go forward, you know, that we...
Well, I mean, is the time now or do we wait till it comes back? I mean, if I talk about it now...
Well, we have, no one's made a motion yet to either approve, disapprove, or defer.
I would recommend that you put on the table what you're talking about.
Okay.
So, the rest of the commission can hear.
Okay.
And then, at that point, then you would make a motion relative to what it is you would like to do with the incorporation of your conditions and see if that gets a second and is carried on.
Okay. The first one is an amendment to condition 1, and it just clarifies what was specified in the applicant's first amendment to the rezoning application. And that's, you know, after the little section that reads, "Two multifamily buildings that we add, where Project B shall be owner-occupied." That's condition 1. Because the application specifies one for rent and one owner-occupied project, but you don't list that as a condition. I don't know that we need to make that into condition, but you referenced the maximum of 500 units. But we want to clarify in the conditions that one is owner-occupied, one is for rent.
This is condition number one?
This is condition number one.
Okay.
And the second is a new condition 20, which then will lead to an amendment to condition 16. Right now, we have a golden opportunity, a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, to correct a mistake, I think, that the traffic engineers permitted years ago. And that is, we can eliminate...
I won't say anything.
We're going to make him sing when he comes back in. Happy birthday.
We'll see which application he's applying. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
As a condition to approval, the owner-developer agreed to eliminate the traffic signal at Ashford Green. It's a, it only serves the project. It confuses traffic, especially the traffic going southbound on Ashford Dunwoody. You come off the diverging diamond. You have the ability now with the connection to, is it Park West? Is that what that street's called? Parkside Place for traffic exiting the project to come out to Perimeter Summit and use the turn signal, the existing turn signal at Perimeter Summit. So, you can do a right-in, right-out going southbound on Ashford Dunwoody. So, that, you get access going southbound on Ashford Dunwoody that way. Left turns at Perimeter Summit. You can also access the project at Lake Huron. So, really, all three roads, but the left turns will get directed out at Perimeter Summit Drive. That traffic light at Ashford Green just muddies up the flow of traffic.
So, you have to, the adjustment to the, and I guess I'm going to ask whether or not, is there a third one?
Well, no. So, the addition to 20 would be that owner-developer agrees to the removal of the traffic signal at Ashford Green on Ashford Dunwoody Road. And then, that would require an amendment of condition 16 to add, assuming the traffic signal at Ashford Green on Ashford Dunwoody Road has been removed, meaning that the traffic engineers view the traffic flow for this new development under the assumption that the signal at Ashford Green is removed.
Okay. So...
Could you restate one more time how that impacts condition 16?
Well, condition 16 is drafted, assuming the existing traffic patterns with the existing traffic signals. So, if condition 20 is approved by the city council and we remove that traffic signal at Ashford Green, the engineers should do their study based on that signal being gone. And that's the amendment to 16. So, after the word locations, you add comma, assuming the traffic signal at Ashford Green on Ashford Dunwoody Road has been removed.
Okay. So, I'm going to ask, and then we'll see if anybody has a comment would like to make a discussion on it. But, I mean, you can either phrase those as motions or, and you can place a motion before that, before we act on the entire application. Or if anybody would like to make, you know, before we have a second, then we should have a motion. So, did you?
I have a comment with regards to the suggestion for the new...
This is to see if he would change the...
Right. To see if he would change. From the traffic engineering profession, it's, once a signal has been, well, let me back up. In order to get a traffic signal installed, there are nine warrants, several warrants have to be analyzed. And several of those warrants are presented to the agency to review putting a signal in. And speaking from my profession, it's hard to get it out once it's in. For example, if that signal was placed in to meet the warrant that deals with crashes, if we have three or four crashes per year, a traffic signal would then improve the situation. So, if we go back and remove that signal, then the agency is liable for any incident that may occur at that intersection because that signal was placed into operation because of a warrant that was met.
Okay.
So, while we are thinking about the flow of traffic, there are certain technology that can allow that signal to operate in a mode where it doesn't go to the side street unless it gets a call from the detector on the side street, which would keep the coordination along...
Okay. Wait, wait, wait. But we've got to be careful. I think the proper way to analyze here is, I mean, we've had, you know, is there a motion on, you know, for us to, a motion and a second? And if there's a motion and a second, then we'll have a discussion on that motion. And I think we need to deal with these before we deal with the motion of approval, denial, or deferral of the entire. So, and my suggestion would be to do them individually, but that's up to you. Would you like to put a motion on the floor? Or do you want to pass, you know, not?
A motion on the amendment to condition 1, which is just adding that Project B will be owner-occupied.
Okay. So, there is a motion on the floor to change condition 1 to add the word owner-occupied?
For Project B.
For Project B, make owner-occupied for Project B. And the question is, do we have a, then do we have a second on that motion? I'll second the motion. Okay. Now, is there any discussion on that issue? I guess what I would, I guess I'll start, I'll have a discussion on this particular item. We got to keep it, let's talk about this item, is since we haven't really seen or or had an in-depth discussion of the, of the project itself yet, I mean, we have an applicant who has asked for a defer, for us to recommend deferral.
It's in the applicant's amendment, it's already referenced.
It's in, it's in their, it's in the...
I'm just saying, does it need to be, I have some kind of a question for Susan, is it something that we want to include as a condition in number 1, when it's in their first amendment for their application?
You don't have to do that, but if, for point of clarification, if you'd like to, it's fine, but as far as the fact that it's in his application, it's already covered.
Okay, so we have a motion to include, made a motion to include owner occupied, the word owner occupied, under, on Project B, and we have a second on that. We've, is there any more discussion, if not, we'll take a vote on, on this item. All in favor of adding that or clarifying item number 1, do you have, did you get what the item number, okay, which is adding owner occupied to Project B, all in favor of that, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
So the motion does not, does not pass, okay, is there, do you have a second motion on one of the other items?
To add condition 20, the owner developer agrees to remove the traffic signal at Ashford Green on Ashford Dunwoodie Road.
Okay, so we have a motion to add item 20, eliminating the traffic signal on it, do we have a second on that? Okay, we don't have a second, so the amendment...
Lucky day.
So I have a motion, which I haven't done, but, you know, generally I have done, but if someone else, I have, I have a motion, and I'd like to add, and it's a motion to recommend to the city council that the applicant's request for a full cycle deferral of RZ 13-11 be granted, and further recommend that the city council refer the application back to this planning commission for hearing and public comment on its next scheduled meeting date of February 5th, 2014.
Second.
We make this recommendation, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, just for point of clarification, relative to RZ 13-11, SLUP 13-01 and SLUP 13-02.
I'm sorry, so the motion, let me write, motion to recommend to the city council the applicant's request for a full cycle deferral of RZ 13-11 and SLUP RZ 13-01 and RZ, and SLUP 13-02 be granted, and further recommend the city council refer all three of those applications back to, the application and the SLUPs, back to the planning commission for hearing and public comment on its next scheduled meeting date of February 5th, 2014. We make this recommendation to give the applicant and the community sufficient opportunity to continue working together for the common good. And now just sweep back to being the chair and ask, do I have a second?
You have a second.
All, any, any discussion on that item? Okay, all in, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we recommend, we will recommend to the city council that the item be deferred back to, that they defer, refer it back to us for February 5th. And I appreciate that. Let's take about two minutes, two or three minutes, just to, sure, there's no bad, no restrooms, we don't think, but...
There might be.
There might be, all right, it's 8:14, we're going to start again in about two, two or three minutes. Thank you. Yes, it's okay. I know. I don't know what to do. I don't either. I was like, I tried it this way, it didn't work. All right, we're going to get started, so we have closed, did we officially, we officially closed that public hearing on that?
Yes, you did.
All right, so now we will open, get everybody's attention, we back on? Yeah, we are.
Yes.
Okay, so we are going to, next item on our agenda is RZ 13-14, Courtney DeFreeze's rezoning request for an R75, R50, and, gay to close the door or, or push him out the door.
We're so friendly here. Sorry.
Thank you. I know, we get, all right, who's going to present this, Ben?
Yes, sir.
Okay, get everybody's attention, let's get going, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the case before you is RZ 13-14, stated, the applicant is Courtney DeFreeze, the property is located at 1458 Edouard Drive Northeast, 18th District, Land Lot 3, uh, Land Lot 238, the acreage of the property is currently 0.445 acres, the existing zoning is R75, and the request is to rezon to R50. As previously mentioned, the subject property is 0.445 acres in size, comprised of one lot of record, the property is on R75 and is found on the northwest corner of Ustinola Drive and Edouard Drive, the subject property is developed with one single-family residence that is accessed off of Edouard Drive. The applicant requests to rezon the property to R50, single-family zoning district, in order to subdivide the single lot into three separate lots.
Yeah, John, do you have the location map up there? Do you have, can you have that easy, quickly?
We have it.
I mean, we have, okay, it's not up on the screen, all right, then go ahead, I'm sorry.
Sorry, we do not have that available, but it is provided in your staff report.
Yeah, we have it.
Yes. Two, three separate lots that would meet the lot size requirement, minimum lot size requirement of 6,000 square feet, as well as the frontage of 60 feet. As you can see in the report, the location map, the site is surrounded by single-family detached uses, immediately adjacent, Zone RA8 to the north, R75 to the south, R75 to the east and to the west, and R50 zoning district is, is located, I believe, to the northeast of the subject property, as well as an RA8 to the northwest. Staff has, based upon the future development map that we have adopted from DeKalb County, the subject property is identified as a traditional neighborhood character area, the comprehensive plan indicates that the intent of the traditional neighborhood character area is to preserve the style and appeal of older traditional neighborhood communities, the plan further indicates that the area supports a density of up to 12 dwelling units per acre, which this project would be conforming with. Proposal to rezon the lots to R50 appears to be suitable, as R50 and RA zoning districts are found directly north and northeast, adjacent, and as well as adjacent to the subject property, and it also appears that the zoning proposal will allow the lots to be subdivided in a manner that is contextual to the existing streetscape. It appears that the single-family proposal will not adversely affect adjacent or nearby properties, and also the prevailing trend found in the Brookhaven Fields neighborhood in which this property is located within, is more, is for a more compact lot pattern with larger home sizes relative to lot size, and based upon the requests, the use appears to be compatible with surrounding properties, which gives surrounding, which gives supporting grounds for approval of the request. To the best of the staff's knowledge, there are known, known historic buildings, sites, districts, or geological resources identified by the applicant or us. To date, the city has not received a response from DeKalb County, DeKalb County, but we did, again, receive comments from the DeKalb County School Board. And based upon the analysis performed by the school board, it appears that they're projecting that there will be an impact of one student that may come out of this proposal of three lots. Public Works did not provide any comments, Brookhaven PD has indicated that there should be no impact associated with this request. Based upon the analysis provided by staff, we have recommended approval with conditions of this request, as stipulated by the eight conditions outlined in the staff report, and I'll quickly go over that. Condition number one, the subject property shall be approved for up to three single-family lots. Two, the subject property shall be developed in substantial accordance with the layout and site plans received November 6, 2013.
Assuming that's accurate, okay, I'm sorry.
The corner lot created by the new subdivision shall at least, shall have at least 75 feet of frontage facing Ustinola Drive. Prior to the issuance of a final plan, the owner developer shall dedicate sufficient right-of-way along the total property frontage along Edouard as well as Ustinola Drive to provide for a width of 25 feet from the center line of both roadways. Prior to issuance of a final plan, the owner developer shall dedicate sufficient right-of-way for a miter at the intersection of Edouard Drive and Ustinola Drive, said miter is to measure at minimum 15 feet from the inner, from, along each of the named roadways. Prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy for individual lots, the owner developer shall construct a five-foot wide sidewalk and two-foot wide landscape strip along the entire frontage along Ustinola Drive, in which the properties will be facing. Final plan shall be recorded prior to issuance of any building permit, building permit for a new house on each lot shall include design and detailed practices that will capture one inch of runoff from impervious surfaces to be dissipated through infiltration, evaporation, and/or eva, or transpiration, and be subject to review and approval of the community development department. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that, I'll open up the public hearing, and we'll ask if there are, John, do you have any comment cards or anyone, oh, I'm sorry, you get, get the applicant, we have to get the applicant, open the public hearing, get the applicant up first, so, who's representing the applicant or the applicant himself, themselves?
Hello, my name is Courtney DeFreeze, I'm the applicant. I heard the previous applicant mentioned 30 years in the neighborhood, and Mr. Chairman, you mentioned a long time, I've been in the neighborhood for 50 years, having lived here my whole life. I appreciate the work that the city planned...
Unfortunately, see, I've been here over 30 and it has, wasn't my whole life.
Well, I know the neighborhood well, I grew up here, I went to Skyland Elementary and Crosskey's High School, and so I know the area very well. And I still live here and my sister lives just a, just a mile away. I mention that because what I want to do is to create a livable community, something that we would all be very proud of, and that's what I strive to do. My associate is with me also, I should introduce Stephen Flanagan, who's been helping me with my application, and my, and which is what you have in front of you. Trying to create a, having lived, my house is the one just on the north of the lot area adjacent, so I live next to this property, I'm part of this property, and so my goal is to turn it, build three houses so that we have actually houses all on the block, which would make a lot more sense, that would be the goal. So we're very excited about the proposal, excited about the plan, the, talked to, I talked to all the neighbors before even filing the application, and in your packet, I think it's page 105 in your packet, you can see that I have signatures from 14 of the properties represented that are all around what I'm trying to do here, 12 signatures, 14 properties. I just ran out of time, everybody was pretty much in favor of it, I could have added more, but that's why I don't believe there's any opposition in the room, everybody's trying to do the right thing here. The city has placed a couple of conditions on here, and we certainly support what the city is trying to accomplish, and we're in agreement with all of the conditions that they have requested. I do ask for one amendment to condition number six.
So you don't agree with all of them? So you don't agree with all of them?
I agree, I just want a clarification, and I would like for the commission to provide the clarification as part of the condition, and I'll give it to you in writing, but here's the issue, the city has asked us to put a sidewalk in, which is perfectly fine, a five-foot wide sidewalk, we'd like to do that anyway. Part of the issue, though, is in order to do that, to meet that condition, may require removing some trees, I think we're looking at three trees, I don't know, I need to get an arborist out there to take a look, to see if the root structures and so forth, but probably a couple of trees would have to come out. What we're asking is that if the city requires me to put in a sidewalk and to remove the trees in order to put in that sidewalk, that I not also then have to, and I'm happy to pay for all that, but that I should not also have to have recompense for the tree removal. And so we're just asking that I don't have to get fined for removing the trees that the city is asking me to remove in order to put the sidewalk down. So the specific amendment that I'm asking for, and I have it available, if you'd like me to give it to you.
Should we go, I guess we need to...
I think that's a fair request, if we're asking you to install a sidewalk which requires the removal of trees, that request is, I don't believe that we should require you to pay for recompense. Now, you do have a tree requirement.
Sure.
And you're not asking to be away from that, you're just asking if you remove those trees at our request, should you have to pay for that, and I would say that that's a reasonable request.
May I ask a question?
Let's wait till, you have a second question?
It's...
Okay, go ahead.
Well, can the trees stay and we build the sidewalk around the trees and keep some of that?
Unfortunately, no, not with the, the miter cut and not with the requirements, it'll be difficult, but kind of a tree hugger myself, we will work very hard to try to do everything that we can.
Okay, I want to make sure you get your 10 minutes before...
Thank you very much, there's not a whole lot more to add, that would be my only request, except to, just to thank you for the consideration, and I would like to go on record and thank the, the city for the, for the work, I had a good relationship with them, and I think they've done a nice job helping to guide us in the process, so, thank you.
And I assume you're requesting to hold the rest of your, you know, refer...
I'll hold the other for any other rebuttals that...
I guess, any question, you mentioned you had assistance from your associate, can you repeat his name again?
Oh, Stephen Flanagan.
Okay. In the neighborhood, you live in the neighborhood or...
Well, we'll ask a question too, I think you have to...
Well, I'm asking him.
Mr. Flanagan is an architect, and he's been helping me with my application, that's been his role.
Okay, thank you, so do we have any, and with that, so do we have any, the public hearing is open, do we have any, any comment cards in support of this application?
I have not received any comment cards.
Do we have any, do we have any comment cards in support, so we will, anybody want to speak? No, so, I, so we will close the public hearing and open it up for questions of the applicant, the staff, and the...
I have a question for either Ms. Cannon or Mr. Song. The property directly in front of the subject property is a church, and there was a sign there, what is going on with that property?
The property across, directly across from that, along Edouard, they're requesting a variance, so what is currently there is a church, the purchaser of that property is now wanting to convert that to a single-family home, so it's going to be a tear-down rebuild, but it's a variance that's involved in that process, and they'll be coming before the border zoning appeals.
Next week.
Next week, and one additional question, I guess that would be to the west, on the west side, there were three properties up for sale, is there anything coming down the pipeline for that, or have you not heard anything?
As far as we know, we have not received any information regarding those signs.
Thank you, Mrs. Song.
And I'd like to say, just, I under cover, I'd like to say, thank you, that's an indication, there aren't, not, I wish the whole group was here, but one of the things about the city is, we all know these properties, and this is unlike, you know, in the past where, so you may not like what we come up with, one way or the other, but we know the, so, so, thank you.
Sure.
All right, any other, anybody else have anything?
I've got questions for...
Mr. Lee, well, I must go.
For the applicant.
Okay.
I have a question, a couple of questions, applicant, or, I really, I believe you, and I like your stance on sustainable development, the fact that you live in the neighborhood, and that's great, that's what we like to see, I just had a couple of questions, have you site planned three homes on these lots, like actual site plans with setbacks, taking into account the conditions, the right-of-ways and everything?
No, they'll be similar to what you see there, but, and they will fit within the conditions, so we did, we did look, so we can meet those conditions with...
Because I did some math on the set, taking into account the setbacks, the right-of-ways and everything, it's going to be very tight, especially on the interior lots, I just didn't know if you had a chance to actually site plan those three or not. My only request would be that if approved, that we then don't turn around and ask for variances for setbacks, lot coverage, and things of that nature.
We certainly agree, we don't want to go through that process either.
Appreciate the work.
That's a question, maybe for staff and applicant, but on this issue of the sidewalk and the trees, I don't know the cost, it's probably, may not really justify it for this property, but as far as, can you give some flexibility to consider at least, if there's an alternative design to the sidewalk that could save the tree, that you be able to do that, that way if you then took down a tree where there was an alternate design that was available, then you still have to pay for that tree, you could have saved it otherwise.
Susan, you have an amendment, come in, I'm going to answer those questions.
No, I guess it's for staff, is that, I guess more, is that a possibility, consider that?
There is a possibility wherein you could include a condition in that regard, it would actually require the review and study by an arborist to determine what type of method would be required to possibly elevate the sidewalk area above the critical root zone, not, it would still encroach in the critical root zone, but I have seen methods used before for the, saving the trees, but it would, it would require a study to determine whether or not it could be done.
I was just going to mention one thing, it's not, it's shown there, but as you can see, Ustinola Drive is currently a 40-foot right-of-way, based upon the conditions that have been implemented or requested by the public works department, is to extend that to a 50-foot right-of-way. As you can see, the 40-foot in itself is pretty, it's tight, if you had a chance to drive out to the side. With that additional 25 feet of dedication, we don't exactly know how it would be impacted, and like the applicant indicated, if, but if there were any means...
and like the applicant indicated, if, but if there were any means for them to save a tree, I'm sure they would go about doing that, and, and also in trying to conform with the conditions that have been provided by staff. And if there's any way that we could work with the conditions, if it was to be approved, to work with the applicant to comply with that requirement, in addition to try to save the trees that are existing there, we'll definitely try to make that effort. But just based upon the right-ofway currently existing, I, I don't really know if that's possible, if there's an alternative available at this time.
Okay, thank you. You have a question? I'm sorry.
Oh, I had a, yes.
You have a question, because I'm, I'm reserving my, I'll ask mine after.
And this is for staff, can we add a condition that these three homes are built but not go to ZBA, that if there's any ZBA variances requested, that it has to be held to two houses? Does that make sense? Because they're trying to get three houses in, it's going to be tight, we've already established that, but what I would prefer is that we approve it with up to three houses with no capability for them to go to the ZBA to ask for an exception if they realize they can't get those three houses on the lot.
You can recommend that as a condition, and you would need to alter condition number two? And condition number one would also need to be altered?
Okay.
Condition number one would need to be altered such as to say, the subject property shall be approved for up to three single-family lots. In the event a variance is needed to accommodate three lots, the property will be limited to two lots in their variance.
Or strike two and just say no variances.
I'm sorry?
Okay.
Or we could just, you could strike the second half of that and just say we approve it up to three single-family residents.
Just, just keep it for, yeah, I mean, just keep the questions, questions, yeah. All right, wait, wait, there's no motion yet, so I, we're still asking questions of the staff and, and the applicant, so.
So the first part needs to read.
Susan, he's asking for you to turn your mic on.
Oh, I thought it was on.
It's not on.
Thank you. In regards to condition number two, if that were to be the case.
Right.
You would remove the second sentence of number two that says, "Any variance is required if authorized by the zoning board of appeals may result in altering the site plan," to the degree necessary to incorporate the vision, so that condition would go away.
Okay.
However, that site plan that's referenced is for the three. And condition number one says up to three.
So you already have this covered?
We do, but you would have to remove the second part of condition two.
Okay.
All right, I have a.
Thank you.
Okay, I have, I have a couple of questions. I guess it says to, to the staff, with the dedicated right-ofway from 40 to 50 feet, with the corner lot being 75-foot frontage on Ustinola, with the seven feet of sidewalks and buffer, do the remain, do lots two and three, let's call lot one the corner lot, lot two and three, are those conforming R-50 lots?
I think I would choose to defer to the applicant, because it appears from an initial, previous question that I would ask of the applicant, he, he did state that they did rework the site plan, although it's not shown before you today, that based upon the conditions that were provided to them initially, they worked the site plan out to where they could potentially fit three lots.
I'll ask the applicant to state for the record that, or, and I want to, you know, I mean, is there a site plan that shows that the two lots, say, whatever the addresses will be, with corner lot being one, are the two, I assume the corner lot would be in, would be in performance in R-50, since it's a 75-foot front, but would the other two lots be conforming R-50 lots?
Yes.
Okay.
For the record.
And then to the, but we don't have a site plan, is that correct?
We have this proposed plan, but they'll be required to do a more detailed plan, and they will have to meet the requirements.
Okay. Applicant might as well stand right there, have another question. So, I'm trying to, so I'll ask the same question that was being asked and referred, is, are, is the site, does the site plan require any variances that will require you to go to the zoning board of appeals?
None that I know of, but there can always be a surprise in the process, but there is nothing that we see that would require us to go to, to get any kind of variances from anyone. We were very thorough in trying to get this done right the first time, so that would not be our intent.
Okay, and the last question I have for you is, I'm trying to understand as I, you know, what the benefit is, I mean, you have a, I mean, the question was, the question is asked as part of our, our discussion, is whether the existing zoning has economic, has reasonable economic value as, as it stands, as R-75. And I believe the answer to that was, it appears that it does. So, you've got a house there with somebody in it, I mean, there were, there were cars there, somebody's living in that house, I assume it's rented or leased, you know, I mean, so it has, as it stands, as R-75, and I mean, we're being asked to make a change, I'm trying to understand what the value is to the community. I mean, you have an R, I mean, I have a house, I've lived in an R-100 house on a lot that's larger than this, and the only value I could see is if I wanted to change it would be to me. So, my question to you is help us understand what the value is to the community considering question number, whatever it is, question number three, says that it does currently have economic value as it exists.
First, I would suggest to you that the house that's there that I own, the rental property, is in need of significant repairs. It's a very old house, and it's a tear-down. It's just that simple, the house is that old, it's a tear-down. I've been milking it along as, as far as I could, as long as I could, until the market improved so that I could build on it. Originally, those were two 50-foot wide lots, the economic use is two 50-foot wide lots fronting on Edoa. If I were to build on Edoa, the house that I would build on one of those lots would tower over the house that's also on Edoa, I think it's 1478 or, hold on, and I'll tell you the exact house, it would tower over one of the houses, which is really unfair to the, to the owner of that house. As you know, this neighborhood is a hodgepodge, the, you can see the zoning, it's just a very eclectic neighborhood. Back when it was built, people would put houses anywhere, there was no control, there was no zoning, and so it's just a hodgepodge. So what I was trying to do is to create an environment that was healthy for 1448, so we didn't tower over them, and they support this application. After speaking with all the neighbors, fronting the houses on Ustinula makes far more sense, it's the only flat road in that neighborhood, so children can play out front, it's a neighborhood environment for bicycles and so forth. If I don't put the houses facing on Ustinula, whoever buys that property from me, if I sell, and I intend to stay here, but if I sell that property, they're just going to run a big old fence down Ustinula, and it's going to take away that, that streetscape. What I'm trying to do is to create a much better streetscape for a walkable community and a, a live, work, play community for the people that, that live there, that's why people are in favor of it. I could split the lot into two, it was originally two lots, and, and not have had, just go for the board of appeals, I would not have been here, been a lot faster, a lot less money and everything else, but I'm really trying to do the right thing for the neighborhood, having lived on that lot for 14 years, and looking at that lot every day, and trying to figure out what is the best way to create a good neighborhood, and this is the plan to, to do that. The economic use is limited, if I were to go and split into those two, because I would be towering over somebody else's house, which would be unfair to them, and I don't, I don't think that's fair, fair to do, to be honest with you, I just don't think that's fair to do.
I guess this is to the applicant, or as a reminder, I mean, I looked at it today, the 1448, I can't remember if that was an original, a 1940s, or one, one of the newer houses.
Oh, no, it's a 1940s, so.
It's one, it's one of the older houses.
Yeah. Really goes back.
So the.
Older than that even.
Question, another, okay, thank you, or, I guess you could say, a good question to the staff would be, if this were, since this is R-75, and if those were two lots, R-75, does it meet the, could you build, could you build on? I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand why we would change it from R-75, when there's so much R-75 around there, regardless of what the neighbors, you know, because we're hearing from the neighbors who want it, not from the neighbors who don't want it, unfortunately, they're not here, so we can't, you know, that's their choice. So, you know, I'm trying to understand why we make the change as opposed to, even if so, you know, you had one lot there, you built one lot with one house, if you took it down, and there was, you could have two lot, or two R-75s, or could you, and would you be, would those two R-75s be conforming? And this is to the staff, so this will be dependent, I guess.
Well, purely based on the R-75 zoning district, the minimum lot size required is 10,000 square feet. The current acreage for that site, I believe, comes up just under, or just above 19,000.
So it would not be.
So it would not be conforming, based upon.
So that's why we, to get conforming lots, if we have, then we need to go to our, either keep it one lot, either one house on the lot, or to R-50 with some number of homes.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, any other questions for staff or the applicant? If not, I will entertain a, I'll entertain a motion or a number of motions, because the, the questions on table were potentially a change in item number six, potentially a change in. When somebody else makes a motion? I'm sorry, there was no question for you, so I, I understand you'd like the, you had to.
There was no chance for a revote?
There is nobody spoke to, there was nobody to, is there anybody to rebut?
The chairman, Mr. Chairman, one of the council commissioners had made a recommendation, I didn't get a chance to address.
I think it would be appropriate to allow him to.
Okay, to use the rest of the 10 minutes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I'll, I'll be brief, I just wanted to comment, I, I can appreciate your, your suggestion that if for any reason this doesn't conform, that I not be allowed to ask for any variance, and I'd be required to do two houses. I certainly can appreciate that. The problem with building two houses, if I was going to do that, that would probably be better if just have gone to variance and building them on Edoa, so that the lot sizes would be longer, you know, 50 by 200 rather than big squares. And so I would appreciate you not making that recommendation, because it's really detrimental to the neighborhood and not consistent with the neighborhood or the project that we're trying to do.
I understand, thank you.
I appreciate that, thank you.
How was it not, may I, I don't know? If you've got two.
My last question, I want to make sure we get this right.
Two facing Edoa, that's what, if you had to put two homes, so that, two, not three, they would face Edoa, correct?
Currently, they're zoned R-75, and so I couldn't do that until I went to a variance and had them split the lot, as everybody in the neighborhood has done. It was two 50-foot lots, they combined them into one, you had the home set exemption, and everybody's going and splitting into two. I could have gone that route, but it's not a good plan for the neighborhood, and that's why everybody around me has supported this proposal, because we really want the houses to front on Ustinula. And, and incidentally, that is very consistent, you can see 2502, that's where I live, you can see the house above it, all those houses are very similar to what I'm looking to do, so it's very consistent with the block and what we're trying to accomplish.
Sure, it's, it's consistent with Ustinula, but not necessarily Edoa, where you have four across the street from it, and then it would be the sixth cross facing that way.
I, I can appreciate it's a very eclectic neighborhood, having lived there for 14 years, I've thought about it every single day.
I'm sure.
And, and this is the best plan that we can come up with, that's consistent with the neighborhood, has widespread neighborhood support, I'll, I'll just add, there's no, there are nobody, there's nobody here, and nobody's written any comments complaining about this proposal.
All right, any more questions for anybody? If not, we will.
I'd like to make a motion.
I guess, close the public hearing, or, or, and I guess we close the public hearing and, and call the questions, is there a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that case number RZ-13-14, with the noted staff conditions and the amendment to condition number six, to add, however, the owner developer shall not be subject to recompense, recompense, excuse me, for tree removal related to the sidewalks that are required by this condition, be accepted for approval.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay, so I'm going to open it up for discussion. I'd like to request, I guess this is, I could request that the person making the motion, to separate that into two questions and two motions, or is let's approve, you know, would you modify, could you, you know, modify that and just make the motion, and would you be willing to modify, make a motion to approve number six, you know, or to add number six, and then have us, and we can have a discussion about the other, but that's, that's your, obviously, like the motion, there's a motion, there's a second, you can, you can modify that if you, if you choose.
Okay. And that's so that we can discuss.
Other, the other, yeah, or we can just call it at one time, it's up to your choice.
All right, so the motion that's on the table, did not get a second, so it's.
I said.
It did get a second.
I think we should vote on it.
We have to vote on it.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's right, okay, that's why I was asking, Robert's rules, or, you know.
I know.
So we have a motion on the table to approve RZ-13-14, as recommended by the staff and conditioned by the staff, with the amendment of number six to include wording. And so all in favor of approving of RZ-13, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
One, two, three, four, five, all opposed? Opposed. The motion, RZ-13, yes, that's one, two, three, four, five, five yes, one nay. RZ-13-14 is approved as conditioned by the staff and with the amendment to number six. Okay, so, next item on the, is that it? All right. All right, so with that, we will entertain, before everybody packs up? You know, no, no, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn?
Do we have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye, as we're all packed up.
Really? Let her go.
Bye, John.
Thank you.